Good evening and welcome to our final budget hearing and business meeting of May 2nd, 2023. Please stand and join Mr. Wharton's third grade class in leading us on the pledge.
Mr. Wharton's third grade, I.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible) of the United States of America and the Republican public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was really well done, class. Okay, before we actually open it up for public comments, I'd like to, we need to approve or appoint chairpersons for the vote. So I need somebody to open at 6:00 and close at 9:00?
I have no problem opening up at 6:00. I'm good with that.
You want to open and close, or just open?
I could do both. Yeah, I could. I'm around all day.
Okay. Is that good?
That's perfect. Thank you.
So when we get to that part of the agenda, we're gonna...
Nobody else wanted that, huh?
(Laughter).
I'm away.
I would've, but it's good, I think, to be open and close. I think it works out well if you can. Okay. So now I'd like to open it up to public comments on any of the logistic, listed agenda items? Okay. Oh, what?
That was me. Sorry.
I heard something. So we'll move to the consent agenda.
Resolve on the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve items 2 through 13 as appears within the consent agenda section of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of minutes for previous meetings, approval of an amended substitute listing for this school year, health and welfare agreements with Osning, and agreement with Putnam County for 3D site mapping, and a agreement with the town of Putnam Valley for school buses to be used during their town camp this summer. We're appointing the workers for the vote on May 16th, including the chairperson, who will be Mr. Oliverio. We're appointing a middle school fifth grade team leader as a replacement for another teacher who has stepped down. We're approving additional hours for staff members. We're approving some unpaid hours. We're amending the rate of pay for school monitors when they act as substitutes in positions outside of their school monitor job. We're accepting a donation, two musical instruments for the elementary school band program from Ms. Heather Kelly. We're approving, amending the high school awards and scholarships. We're approving athletic team mergers for next year with Lakeland School District, which includes boys swimming, girls gymnastics, ice hockey on the varsity and modified level. And we're approving a five-year contract with Southern Westchester BOSI's for Lower Hudson Regional Information Center computer services for, it will be 2023 through 2028. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Reports? We don't have student reports, so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Left.
You got it. So, mine's very quick, so I feel like we're here every week all of a sudden. So, a quick update of what's happened since last week. We have our district safety planning meeting scheduled with Alteris tomorrow afternoon. I know the buildings are also holding scheduled, regularly scheduled, building safety training sessions with Alteris as well before the end of the school year. I do want to acknowledge it's Administrative Professionals Day and Teacher Appreciation Week, having recently passed or currently taking place, as well as Principals Day as well, Principal Appreciation Day. I have the ability to attend the Theater Works production of Something Rotten. I know many of the board members were able to attend as well. As always, I was amazed by the talented students we have here. It was really a fantastic show and a huge compliment to all those adults that made the production possible, and obviously the students who starred in the show. And on Sunday, they also held the Girls in Sports Day inside because the weather was terrible. And again, a compliment to all those who make that possible. I know it's always very well attended. It's been going on for many, many years. Many of our student athletes come back and volunteer their time to work with the younger students in Putnam Valley to teach them a wide range of sports. And then some quick upcoming events. PTA has their Meet the Candidates night Wednesday, May 3rd at 5:30 here at the high school. National Honor Society induction also Wednesday, tomorrow, 7:00 PM. The Film Club and Video Production Club have their Film Festival on Friday, May 5th at 6:00 PM. I'm feeling Mr. Mahoney will be there. Our school budget vote is Tuesday, May 16th, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the elementary school. The Putnam Valley Elementary School has their Math Night Wednesday, May 17th at 6:30. And our next board meeting, you guys can have a week off, is Thursday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. You don't really get a week off because the board, the budget votes that Tuesday.
Okay. All right. So then we'll move into presentations. This is our final budget hearing. So, Figarilla, do we have anything we want to talk about? No?
No, we're done.
Not really. No, I mean, we can talk about the budget if you guys want to. We, of course, you know, we should, you already announced the, you know, the budget being on May 16th. The amount of the budget is $58,145,135. It hasn't changed since our last meeting, and nothing has, you know, changed within the lines of the budget. The, the fact that, you know, there is absentee ballots being accepted right up until the last day, until 5:00 PM, and they'll be counted as long as they're here on time. And I don't know if anybody else has any questions regarding any of the items within the budget, or has had a chance to respond to any questions maybe that they've been asked over the last week. We obviously addressed a lot of the things that we talked about at the PTA meeting and questions we received. I think, you know, to highlight again, we had to remove the pre-K from the budget. The pre-K originally, you know, we had the revenues coming from the state, and we're not going to be able to run that program simply because there's, the interest that we had expressed in that from a couple of vendors is just, it doesn't meet the requirement of what the state is willing to give us for aid for that program, and that's all. We can't ask parents to supplement that program. So, that got removed from the budget, and then again, we added the SRO. So, I don't know if there's any points that you guys want to bring out about the budget.
Just one quick comment that was made at the PTA meeting was, the comment was, "All surrounding districts have the pre-K program," which is not accurate. So, I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Right, that is absolutely true. Yep, some school districts are able to run it or have been running it for years, and they continue to run those programs, but based on the new information that we have on, and what the funds that we've been given, it's just not possible for us to do it. What we did get today is our state aid, and I'm sorry if I failed to mention that. It's, it's not the same number that I originally received. It could be because it's based on expenses or expense-based aids that we get, which are the BOSI's aid and transportation aid. Those are all based on actual expenses. And I guess after looking at our BOSI's costs for the year, our aid is down about $100,000 from what I originally expected in January. So you can see already, we, we are getting news of a reduction in what we're going to receive.
Regarding the pre-K programs, I just want to highlight the fact that there's many different models that exist out there, and obviously different funding sources. Some districts qualify for funds based upon the number of students they have that are economically disadvantaged that Putnam Valley does not qualify from. Some districts run it as in, as a curricular program, where students themselves take a class, they host the pre-K program in their school. So essentially, the labor for the program, a majority of the labor for the program is students that are running the program. But in that case, the schools, they know that run that, run a single program, a single class, as opposed to many classes. I do know one school in our area was able to provide space and partnered with a local YMCA to run a program. That YMCA already runs their before and after-school program, which was why it made it easy for them to do it. But to your point, many, many school districts in our region are in the same boat we are, where the state's offering them money and they're unable to find a willing community-based partner to operate a pre-K program under the restraints that are provided from New York State. So, we'll continue to lobby the state to remove those restraints, to allow us to negotiate locally the best deal we can to be able to service as many students in Putnam Valley as we can with the pre-K funds that the state makes available to us.
And there's also, the added wrinkle with pre-K is, we have established community partners, well, not partners, but community businesses, that, you know, it's not, it's, it's a little different in that we wouldn't want to put local businesses out of business by taking an entire program in-house, which, you know, if there was enough community support, that would be something we could do. At the same time, it would be closing down businesses that have been around for years, which I don't know if that's the direction as a district we want to do, especially when there's, you know, it's less tax-based to even be able to help taxpayers in the community. So there's all these additional wrinkles in there. I mean, there, there are possible ways down the road, we might want to explore this down the road, that we do some subsidization of what the state will empower us to have, but that, that's probably a longer view for us to look at, just as we took the longer view when we added full-day kindergarten. That was also, that did also impact those partners, same partners or similar partners, but that, that, we already had a half-day program, so it was just, you know, augmenting that. So those are things that, you know, it's not as simple as the dollars, so there's really all kinds of impacts.
Right. Well, until there's a realization, maybe by the state, that this area of the state, it just doesn't have the same dynamics, you know, economically as the rest of the state does, and therefore probably shouldn't be treating it the same way. Another point in the budget, or another item in the budget that, you know, is a highlight, I would say, is our health insurance cost, health insurance premiums gone up, going up 5.5%. Some other things are just the fact that we've had an 8% inflation over the last, you know, year, year and a half, and has really affected our utilities, our, you know, costs for upkeep of facilities. And I think those are really the things that are affecting the bottom line in our budget.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
Just a reminder that we, the adopted budget is within the tax cap, and it is, requires a simple majority vote.
Below.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, the tax cap is being, I mean, the budget is being presented with, you know, a tax levy that's under the cap. And of course, the newsletter's coming out, right? So after this meeting, we'll be able to release the newsletter, and everyone should see that, guessing by early next week, if, you know, everything goes well with the printer and it gets out on time, and it gets to the post office, and the post office delivers it, and all of those things happen, but it's definitely on schedule. And there are some, there's some good information in there, and, I mean, anything, you know, any of us in the business office are available to contact for information regarding the budget up until that point, so there's still lots of questions to be answered. If people have questions, they should call us and get the facts from the source of the, of the document, and not, you know, rely on other sources that are out there and things that are floating around and on Facebook and social media. I think getting more accurate information is important, and leads us to the right decision when we're, when we're going to the polls.
Is the newsletter online also, just in case people don't get it?
It will be online. It will be posted there. We're not allowed to put the budget notice out till six days before the budget is, you know, we have to get it ready, get it into the letter, and then it's supposed to be, you know, sent to homes no, no less than six days before the budget, so.
Okay.
I know more than, I forget how many days, but we have a window in there to fit it in, so it'll be there.
But if people don't get it in their mail, they can look at it?
If they don't get it in the mail, yep, it'll be posted on our website, as it usually is, and it'll be available starting tomorrow, I think. Yes. Okay.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jill. And thank you for all your work on the budget. I know that you started next year.
I really should be thanking everybody in the office. I mean, everybody works very hard on putting everything together. It starts, I said to Dr. Left, "It starts in July and it doesn't end until..." But, you know, it's ongoing, of course, and, but I owe huge thanks to everybody in the business office, you know, particularly our public relations person, Jeannie Denick and Maureen Patterson, who helped really put the, you know, everything into motion and get it out there, and help me, support me every day. I think those people are key in putting the budget together, and everybody in the office. I mean, we really, we really have a great team, so.
Jill, if I can, do you think there'll be any changes? I know the state budget still has not been adopted, and there's a minor war going on between local and her own, her own party.
Luckily, it's not about education, right?
No, that seems pretty set. It doesn't look like that will, will vary?
No, I, I don't anticipate that at all.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
I think they're projecting either today or tomorrow, the budget will be finalized.
We hope.
But to Jill's point, educational funding, for once, is not a topic of debate.
With the, with the bus runs, they, not the bus runs, with the state runs that they came out with today, did they include meals? Did that get added into the, I know they were talking about free meals.
No.
Still not settled.
Yeah.
I think, I had last read that they were talking about funding meals for economically disadvantaged communities only.
But there's a faction that wants it for everybody, not to make those children who need it.
Right. I know both houses, both the one-house budgets supported it.
Yeah.
But I don't, the last I saw, it wasn't part of the bill or the year.
What they're talking about is funding, like, some difference between, like, the free, and the free and the, and the, the paid, but only in economically disadvantaged districts, that, which would mean anybody like over 60%. I think they're quoting 40%, but normally when they refer to economically disadvantaged, it's over 60%. So, it's not even something that is going to, let's say, affect us when, when it comes to the lunch program. We are bidding for a new, for a contractor, so we don't know if we're going to end up with someone new in the coming year, so that's something to look out for coming next month.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll move to new business. Resolution one, please.
Resolve the recommendation of superintendent schools to appoint Victoria Cracco as a five-week-long, sorry, five-week long-term substitute music teacher at the middle school, effective May 15th, 2023 through June 23rd, 2023, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of $150 per day.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolve to accept the tax collector's report for the 2022-23 school year as per Document 182/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolve to approve the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association 2023 to 2024 nominating committees, slate of officers, directors, members of the Board of Directors, and a 2023-2024 proposed budget, and authorize the Board of Education president to sign the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association annual meeting ballot as per Document 185/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd like to open it up now to public comment on any topic. Introduce yourself, please.
My name's Katrina Rocco. I've been a resident in PV for 10 years, and I have one child in the middle school and one in the elementary school. I'm also a teacher in a neighboring district that knows very well what it's like not having a contract, or should I say, an updated contract. It's disrespectful, you feel taken advantage of, undervalued, and unappreciated by your administrators. However, nothing ever comes between a teacher and their students. A member of our community mentioned a few meetings ago about the teachers being unhappy about not having a contract, and how she doesn't want unhappy, unhappy people working with her children. I understand and agree with what she's saying, but let me clarify, teachers are a different breed. They won't work less or allow no contract to impact their students. They will continue to create and, create and implement a rigorous education, analyzing data, modifying and adapting lessons, and the list goes on. They will continue to give 110% every day to their students, and you know that. And that's why they deserve a fair contract for today. Changes were made to the contract a few years back, and we all know the changes we've gone through since then. COVID created a whole new world. Let's think back to September 2020, when most schools were virtual, PV was not. Our elementary students returned to school in the beginning of September every day of the week. Our teachers were there, providing our children with the best education possible during such uncertain times. Chances are, they were facing their own challenges with childcare, or training their own kids to participate in a remote education while home alone. Why? Because they were there for our students. How can we not show these teachers some gratitude now? They deserve an updated contract. Now, COVID is something we've adjusted to, and as a result, we're dealing with inflation. PV teachers should not have to get second jobs. Teaching jobs are endless. It would be a real shame if they had to rush out during those afternoons when they would once, that they'd once use that time to create new materials, or just do some extras for the kids. But now they have to rush out to get to a second job in order to provide for their own families in today's economy. Honestly, I'm not too concerned about the teachers' happiness, because they're strong, they're resilient, and they're making things work, because that's what teachers here in PV do. I am concerned about how unhappy the community is and will be if this isn't settled soon. I've seen firsthand how the longer teachers go without a contract can negatively impact the whole community. It's embarrassing as parents and as community members. We look like we don't care about our community's biggest assets, our teachers. And speaking of assets, our home values are directly accredited to our schools, our teachers. How can you not acknowledge them? By not giving them a reasonable contract, you're inviting them to leave. These are wonderful, experienced teachers that are and will easily find jobs in school districts that appreciate them. Our best teachers leave, our home values go down. Our educators need to feel appreciated and supported here in PV. They need a reasonable, fair contract that will keep them here. I get it, everyone wants to be a hero and save the community money, but please, not at the sacrifice, not at the expense of our teachers, or at the sacrifice of our students. Please work it out for our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katrina. So, I think you brought up very, some very valuable points, and I first want to start by stating that nobody sitting up here has ever once insinuated that our teachers are doing anything less than exceptional things in their classrooms, as they have done from, as they do every day. And I never pass up an opportunity to compliment our teachers and our entire district and what we were able to do during COVID, when many other districts were not in session. And I understand firsthand the sacrifices that our teachers, our administrators, our support staff members made in order to be here to service the students of Putnam Valley, when in many cases, their own children were home. I'm speaking for myself as well, right? My kids did not have the same experience that students attending schools in Putnam Valley did, and that is a huge testament to the hard work and dedication and commitment of everybody who works here. So, I couldn't agree with you more that our teachers are deserving. I couldn't agree with you more that they're not doing any less in the classrooms than they would typically be doing, because that's typically, that's definitely not who they are. And I couldn't agree more that this needs to get done as soon as humanly possible. The district remains committed to getting it done. We'll meet morning, evening, afternoon, weekends, it doesn't matter. We're willing to sit down at any time to help negotiate what's a fair contract, and I think the important piece here is, we have to determine what's fair for teachers, fair for students, and fair for our taxpaying community, and that's ultimately what we want to do. But tomorrow isn't soon enough to get it done.
Upcoming meetings?
So, the next time we'll all be together will be the budget vote on the 16th, and then the following meeting after that is going to be Thursday, the 18th. So we have to decide on what presentation will take place on the 18th, but obviously, somewhat depending upon what transpires on the 16th, will determine what the agenda for the 18th is. Scary thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was there anything that we need to do before the end of the year that we haven't done? Any presentations we've made?
Data.
We have, so we have a data one. The request was, and I'll let Jackie jump in if she wishes, the request for the data one is to hold off until the end of June, because what it'll do is, it'll give us another data point for our spring administration of the I-ready exams. So, at this point, since we're so close to having that data, it seems to make sense to hold off until we have another data point in which to share. But definitely, the, the data presentation is something that we've already begun working on.
Can you just give us the full picture of the growth throughout the year, if we could see where we started in the fall, and then where we end at the spring? Since we won't have our New York State test data at that point to look at.
Okay. And how did the test go this week? Everything good? The math, it was this week, right?
Math is this week, but yes, so far, everything's been great, and we did everything for our ELA test earlier last month.
Board member comments? I would like to say, I was thinking today about today being Teacher Appreciation Day, how much we appreciate the, the efforts and the creativity and the strength of our staff. I know the PTA did some, or is going to do something. Dr. Left is right, there isn't one of us sitting up here that does not appreciate our teachers and our teaching staff. They are wonderful. The play is just one example, but I know I will feel the same way at graduation, National Honor Society, at sporting events, whatever it is. Our students are amazing, have come from, have amazing families, we have amazing support. But our teachers really do an amazing, a really terrific job, and we do so appreciate their work. Any other board comments?
You know, it's always difficult, because our responsibilities as a Board of Ed, of course, number one of the students, we, we have to take care of them. We have to look out for our teachers, we have to look out for our community. So, it's a fine line. You know, you certainly want to show, I know personally I do, and I know that all the other board members do, we want to give the, the teachers as much incentive to remain in Putnam Valley as possible with a fair and decent contract. That being said, without causing individuals to leave the community because they cannot afford the taxes. So, we're torn by that, and that's what we're working on right now with the negotiations. And they're difficult. Absolutely, they're difficult, and we're back and forth, back and forth, but we will reach a, a finish on that, of that I'm certain, and it will be fair, and it will be equitable, and it will be the right thing for all the groups, that we have to watch out for, our students, our teachers, our community. And I believe that emphatically. It just takes time.
I just want to publicly dispel the notion of, by somehow defeating the budget, you're, you're making a statement on behalf of teachers or their unhappiness regarding a contract or anything of the sort. And for anyone who thinks that that may be the solution, you certainly don't have to take my word for it, but I would certainly encourage you to reach out to a teacher who works in this community, work out to one of the, reach out to one of the leaders of our teachers' union, and ask them what they believe the impact would be on a defeated contract, a defeated budget on their contract. And I think you would be, I think 100% of them will report back that a defeated budget only hurts their bargaining, hurts their ability to get a new contract. It hurts their ability to get a new contract. It hurts everybody. And hurts their staffing. So I just want to dispel that notion that by somehow defeating the budget, that you're standing up for teachers because you're actually doing the exact opposite of that if that were to happen. And again, I encourage you to reach out to our teacher leaders if you question that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I would like a resolution to convene an executive session for two matters of the employment history of two particular persons and one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, known as the Taylor Law.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There will be no business conducted afterwards. Thank you very much. Have a good week.
Good week.